I will now call the meeting to order at seven, almost 7:01 PM here at McAdavick Place in St. George. Good evening and welcome to the May 2025 regular council meeting for the Eastern Charlotte Council. We have approximately 12 more to go for the end of this term. I welcome all those that are attending here tonight and those that are watching us on TV or on their cellphones. I wish to welcome and thank CHCO for being here tonight. Natalie, see, Dawson Hat is doing the camera, Dawson. I guess you can't wave because you're doing the camera. Florence Mitchell's in the back and of course their star, Vicky Hogarth is here tonight. So it's great to have you here, all of you here tonight. Before we begin tonight, I want everybody, if they could, join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of the longest-serving mayor of St. George for 16 years, his worship Stan Smith, who passed away on March 21st, and as well, Robert or Bob Lee, former councillor and deputy mayor of St. George, who passed away on May 6th. Our thoughts go out to Stan's wife of 60 years, Sybil, his daughters, his three daughters, Deborah, Gail, and Lisa, and his entire family. And our thoughts go out to Bob's wife of 54 years, Mary Ellen, his son Ian, our MLA, and daughter Erin. Tonight I need a motion from council to adopt the agenda that we have tonight. Okay, councillor Thompson, second by councillor Lee. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And it's passed unanimously. Three is conflict of interest. This is your opportunity to declare conflict of interest. I myself will declare conflict on 10 B tonight. So when that comes up, the deputy mayor will take over at that part of the meeting. Number four is adoption of minutes of previous council meetings. What's council's pleasure on this? Councillor Lee?
I move to approve the minutes circulated to members of council for April the 16th, 2025, regular meeting of council, April 22nd, 2025 Committee of Whole, April 29th, 2025 Committee of the Whole, May the 7th, 2025 Committee of the Whole, May the 7th, 2025 Special Meeting of Council, and May the 13th, 2025 Committee of the Whole.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second for that motion. Deputy Mayor, question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's passed unanimously. Then we can move ahead two or three pages. That brings us to five, business arising out of minutes. There is none tonight. And number six tonight is delegations. And tonight is the presentation of the financial audit report. Oh, that's been moved to June. Okay, sorry. That moves things along quicker. Six B, tonight, Anglobe of Water Exploration Update. This is about Black's Harbor. While she is getting ready in place, I'll just let the audience know and the people watching us tonight that Anglobe is working on the exploration for Black's Harbor, the water. I want to let everybody know that everybody sitting at this table here tonight is unanimous that this is our top priority for this council. Nobody here at this table thinks otherwise. And we think it is, I think, when it's all said and done, everybody here wants this done as soon as possible. There's nobody here has any other thing in their mind about this. So tonight I'm going to hand it right over to Anglobe.
Thank you. All right. So my name's Laura Legere. I'm the project manager for Anglobe for this water exploration study. So on the agenda tonight, bit of a project refresher, might be new for those of you who are not on council, bit of a recap of what we've done to date, status update, some action items we had from a meeting that was held in April, what are our next steps. The key thing right now is agreement to conduct exploration, so with landowners, specific landowners. And we'll, I'll give a little bit of a target timeline, depending on how the project unfolds, may be subject to some adjustment, but. And then questions if needed. Can you hear me all right? I've been told that a few times. Feel free to let me know if I'm not speaking loud enough. Yeah, yeah, okay. So what does the project consist of? So the project is a well exploration project for Black's Harbor. The project was set up so that that phase would be a standalone project and any future infrastructure, construction, design and construction would be a future project once, you know, it's a bit better understood where a water source will be located because that can impact how much the infrastructure costs and what specific infrastructure is needed. So that's the current phase is the well exploration and testing process. Our last meeting here was in April and our key action items were to prepare some additional landowner agreement document. I'll show up an image in a little, in a minute here, a map of what kind of we were looking at, but things we've completed to date. It follows the provincial environmental impact assessment and water supply source assessment process. So it's a regulated process that we have to follow. The first step is we do some background studies, some desktop studies with our hydrogeologist based on all the available data that we can. We select some target areas and submit the EIA registration document to the province for review. And we had an initial focus area we called Zone A. I'll show you that in a However, we did some environmental studies and site visits and we've kind of moved away from that specific zone. But the provincial review process is still ongoing. There's a lot of good reviews that have been done. It's not lost. It's just a little bit redirected. So we're looking at a new zone that we've called Zone E, near the Highway 176. We've completed additional desktop hydrogeology studies and prepared some landowner agreements for the municipality's use. And we've started to draft the request to the EIA branch of the province. But we're waiting on all the landowners to be at least partially or generally in agreement before we proceed with submitting that to the EIA branch. There's another task, as you know, that's kind of ongoing at the same time. There's some discussions on the current privately owned water supply. It's, I think, with the owner, there's a confidentiality agreement. But our main focus is the well exploration project. So this is the map that I mentioned. So we see a small area kind of in green on the east. That was our original target area. But it's a bit hard to see with the light. We found a lot of wetlands and other constraints in that area. Oh, thank you. Perfect. So you can see the orange, this is wetlands, and there were some unmapped wetlands that were not initially known to us. So, and then that prevented us from kind of keeping our exploration zone away from the current wells. So we didn't really want to go too close to those wells. So then the properties that we see in red are kind of revised target areas that we've, we've kind of identified over the course of the last few meetings and some additional desktop studies. So again, this is our current primary area of focus, in particular, the properties north of the highway there. And our action items from our last meeting were to prepare some additional landowner agreement documents. And that's, that's been completed and those have been sent out. And to respond to some email questions from one particular landowner, which is, I had marked it complete, but as I was driving here, I think we got some more communications. So complete slash ongoing. And for the municipality, it was to follow up with some of the landowners that had already received agreements and send the additional agreements to some of the new properties that we had discussed during our previous meeting. And then, you know, to follow up with the landowners a few weeks after the letters went out. So I think both of those tasks are still kind of ongoing. I think it's always a bit of a challenge to kind of connect, especially when we're talking about people's So in terms of status and next steps, so typically how it would work is the land use agreement is kind of sent out, and then we have to do a follow-up by phone or, you know, maybe in person, depending on the logistics and whether we have contact information. And then, you know, if the owners are kind of generally in agreement with considering participating in the exploration program, then maybe a meeting face-to-face or, you know, a phone meeting, depending on the particular owner. So, so all the landowner agreements have been sent by mail. Right now, the main action item is for a direct follow-up, which I think the municipality is working on. There was one landowner that had responded no, but I think we can, we can finalize those discussions. The no might be a maybe in the end. And we're hoping if we can try to touch base with the landowners to understand, if signed, but at least to get a general idea if they're willing to entertain allowing the exploration process or not. By the end of the month would be the target timeline for that. So in terms of kind of the overall picture, right now, the primary focus is to finalize the landowner agreements. That's kind of a key task to allow us to proceed with the request to the EIA branch and also to conduct some additional onsite assessments. So it's important to notice, note that we haven't been onsite yet, so we haven't done any physical environmental screening or looked at things like site access, that kind of thing. But if we get approval from some or all of the landowners, we, that would be the step that we would do next, would be to do the onsite screening, the EIA request for approval. And then, once the EIA approval process is complete, we would hope to receive their approval to continue with physical exploration. So that would be well drilling, construction of access roads, pumping tests. And then the very last task is to assess all the data that we've collected throughout the process of drilling the wells and pump testing the wells. And we call it the hydro geological assessment. So it's a report that's done, it's a technical report. And then we submit that to the province for their review. Then typically they would ask some questions and we would respond. And that's the report that would be used to set the approved pumping rate for the wells, assuming all goes as hoped. And so that, you know, at the end of the EIA review process, the goal is to receive kind of approval for those wells. So the village or the town can proceed into the next phase, funding approvals, and hopefully a design and construction project. So I kept it kind of short and sweet today, but open for any questions.
Yeah, what I'll do, I'll go to council on this. As I remind the public, even though it really only affects two people sitting at this table, everybody at this table realizes how important this is. What's good for Black's Harbor, it's good for all Eastern Charlotte. So every councillor here knows, is on board with that. But I'll turn this over to council at this point and for questions or comments for this. No, councillor Hat, there you go.
So we're not strangers, that's for sure, in this process. This has gone on for a long time. And let's find the spots, put the wells, let's get pipes in the ground and get this done and over with.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, I thank you very, oh, I'm sorry councillor Ted.
I just have one. I think I know the answer to this. So these landowner agreements, if they say no, there's, we, there's no way to expropriate that, right? Because there's no proof of water, right?
We did hear from one of them. We answered some questions and he kind of responded back and said, oh, I don't think I'm interested. But did reach out again and I think maybe we could have some more discussions with him. I don't think it's a firm no, but definitely some, some discussions and some, some input probably from the municipality. I think we have seven on our list right now. There's four or five more interesting properties and a couple that we sent letters to as kind of a backup. They've all received a letter in the mail. I don't know if we've reached out to all of them by phone, emails? Yeah, by email, okay.
If it's by mail, we may have to pick a different way of doing it.
My email, sorry. I didn't send the letters myself, but yeah, they've all been sent anyway. Yeah, yes.
Any other questions or comments from council? None? I thank you very much for coming in today. I appreciate it. I know that the audience, there's probably a lot more people are going to watch this tonight and it's being recorded by CHCO. But so I thank you very much for coming in. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Council, that brings us to department reports. 7A is the general government report and I have the CAO, Jason Cadet.
Thank you, your worship. General Government Report for the month of April. The financial auditors are expected to present to council at the June meeting now. They're working with the province on, we're working on the province, with the province on merging of the rural tax authorities as well. It's something we've, we've completed all documents and that's now in with them, just to work out the final details. Housing and development for the two project, Village Housing Projects in Black's Harbor. PVH has received a loan package from CMHC and is now under legal review. Once signed, Housing of Brunswick will do their final review. They are unusual, they're, it's a, they aren't sure of the timeline. They've had to give us really a timeline on when the CMHC will complete their application. Upcoming tendering of two to four house lots in Black's Harbor. And Hillside Subdivision Project is waiting for a wetland delegation, delineation report, which is coming on Friday in order to proceed with the subdivision of lands there. Developer has built and is building an office, building onsite as well. I did reach out to the developer just as early as this week on the apartment building in Brunswick Street, just trying to see if we can get, see if that project's still on the go and if there's a timeline and what we can do to assist them to hopefully build that, that apartment. EMO, meeting with the province EMO in May, an upcoming training and available support. Both generators are now in place, McAdavick and for the municipal hall. Staffing, new public works staff member for St. George is Robbie Steen, starts Monday. Posting has been made for the Economic Development Project Manager. Did do some modifications to the job description, more, a little more focus on actual construction and building type projects. Internal posting going out for Parks and Recreation and it'll be an internal posting first and then we'll see if, we'll see what the uptake is for that. Public Works, summer benches, picnic tables, garbage cans are all, have all been placed out. End of May, we'll start patching and additional pothole repair. Awaiting quotations for concrete work and sidewalks as well as some of the paving quotes outside of what we've already done for gas tax. So some additional paving quotes. And I did talk to the contractor, different contractor than we've been waiting for, for the high school crosswalk. So that is, that's a go. He's got the go-ahead to do that work and a few other different repairs, both in Black's Harbor, St. George. Childcare YMCA is, YMCA has engaged with Murdoch and Boyd on engineering and architectural work. We did put out a news release on the childcare update and we'll hope to get something soon from Murdoch and Boyd on the construction cost. Water and Wastewater, Anglobe Engineering continues work with the IBA project for the water source of Black's Harbor and providing updates to council at the committee meetings as well as tonight. CBCL is doing the IBA project for St. George, undergoing landowners approval, so much the same as with the St. George IBA project, trying to seek landowner permissions for test wells in the Upper La Tang and Utopia area for the St. George IBA project. Still awaiting possible funding assistance for dredging, as I think I've updated council on that since the report. The RDC has come back and said that they cannot give us funding for this and we could do some studies to see if there's any assistance that they can give us. And, but they are, they're concluding that the, any dredging is actually an operational cost, not something that they can fund with any housing initiatives, which, you know, that was held us up for a while. And it's unfortunate that RDC is unable to come through with that, but that was their, their final decision. Waiting final dates for cleaning the water towers in St. George and Black's Harbor. And that has been scheduled now for June. I think it's the second week of June. Flushing of the systems in Black's Harbor in mid-April. Next flushing is in June. Flushing of the system in St. George in May, that's already taken place. And flushing hydrant has been installed in the Lower Clinch Street in St. George. Parks and Recreation, awaiting fencing for the basketball court in St. George and repairs of the ball field. They will be onsite tomorrow to do that work. Much, much wait for that. Drain and draining drainage improvements, expect it for May for the St. George ball field. And we can see that finally they have an excavator out there tonight as well. Port of Potties were ordered for six to seven park locations in Eastern Charlotte. Bleachers ordered for the basketball courts and we've got public works guys who are putting those together today as well. Construction on replacement of ball court in Black's Harbor is scheduled to start this month. The boat docks in Riverside Park and Canal Beach will be installed by the long weekend in May, which they were. Painting taking place at McAdavick Place in May. And they did complete a street sweeping in St. George and Black's Harbor and we're just now waiting for the lining, crosswalks and, and street lining to be, to be completed. Dangerous unsightly properties, properties. Upcoming meeting with council on three properties moving ahead with order to remove and demolish. Two are in the Lakotopia area and one is in Back Bay. Meeting with Service Commission Inspector scheduled for June. So we'll try to get that meeting together in, in the next month. In garbage collection, working with Faro on collection issues for the Diggity Wash area in regards to seasonal trash bins and the large dumpsters. So hopefully we've can complete as much of that. So that's the general government report.
That's quite a report. Councillor Dedrick is your first.
Your worship, I have two questions for, for Jason. First question is, do we ever flush the hydrants on Mount Pleasant?
Yep, all the flushing hydrants are, all the hydrants are, they have to go through that flushing schedule.
Okay, so it'll be done this month, you said?
Um, yeah.
It has been done already for Lower Clinch, you said, but?
Yeah, that was a flushing hydrant. It's different than the typical hydrants you see. They're small. So it was a smaller hydrant that they just installed.
Okay. And last month, council unanimously renamed the Day Adventure Center to Riverside Park. Maybe you can share some words about what council is working on in that area?
Well, yeah, we'll be putting out, I think we're planning, that's our next news release with the contractor, he as well, got back to me finally today as well to say that he'll be onsite this week. So we're hoping that he'll be onsite to at least get some ground moved and start to, to do some excavation. So as, as we know, that the plan is to put a, a large outdoor picnic shelter, large shelter, as well as do improvements with guard rail, much like you see at Canal, a lot of the site area to be cleaned up, the islands to be improved, a lot of landscaping that's going on, hopefully to extend this year, the, the parking area as well. So fairly large amount of different things that we're doing down there. So we phased, like we're in our phase, second phase of the improvements. So, yeah. So we'll be news release, we'll put a news release out.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, councillor Lee?
I just wanted to add to a little something to what Jason said. This, we're building a 40 by 60 pavilion roofed over for the, for the use of anybody who'd like to do, you know, a farmer's market. The other thing is, anyone that's been down that way probably noticed that the bandstand is completely rebuilt. It looks like a brand new one. We're going to try to get some, some things going on on the weekends there too, like we used to. So hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll, I think, I think some, some people have already reached out to some of the farmer's market people that travel around and see if we can get something started this year down there and get it, get things moving again. We're going to do some work on the parking lot also. We're not paving it, paving it this year, but we are going to do some work on it. And I believe Jason is on the docket for next year to be paved. So yeah, we'd like to make that a happening spot again. And we're, we're, we're willing to put the effort into it and hopefully it works out.
Any other question? Councillor?
The security camera rebates, they'll start again in June, but they have to be a specific pixel and memory and all that stuff. Could we get something put back out into the public to kind of push that along a little bit?
Yeah, well, once it, once it gets a, we get to that point where we're open for intake, definitely put it out.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly. It's already on the website as well. There is a piece on the website. So we'll do a limited social media blitz.
No, the questions or comments, just one comment I'll make is that the, I know that Jason just touched on it, was the generator for this building. If you look out here to your, my left, but maybe your right, that generator is just outside there. That's going to keep this building up and running at all times. So the minute, the minute the power goes off, it will kick in and the power will stay out of this building. It's run by natural gas, so it doesn't have to be refilled. There's a natural gas line that goes directly to that. And therefore, this is, this would be a, a spot for everybody that could, wants to go to Eastern Charlotte. If there's a major power outage or a major storm, this building is always going to be up and running. If there's no other comments, then I'll go to the reports of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, Mr. Alex Henderson. Thanks, Alex.
Thanks, your worship. So, yeah, so PrAC met in this last month to give a view to council on the proposed Hillside subdivision and rezoning in Black's Harbor. So that's bylaw Z26 and I believe that's on your agenda later tonight. So this involves a public street extension, cul-de-sac turnaround and a public park. Staff also provide a report to municipality on the Hillside Estates subdivision, St. George, and how to complete that process. So as the CAO referenced, there's a delineation report, which will help with the, the final stages for its approval. So the next steps involve getting those, the street and the land for public purposes assented to on the plan and then having any unmapped wetland features shown on the plan. And then that can be approved. As the CEO also referenced, there was the, that dredging, housing infrastructure request. If those unsuccessful, our housing specialist is, is available to help with additional types of requests like that. If, if there's other infrastructure, housing related things that are on the horizon, we'll either share with Jason or Jason has an opportunity, he identifies, and we, we work together on those types of things. So it's just one of those things where we do on the side. Terms of development, 18 building or development permits approved year to date, seven last month. You've had almost 1.4 million in new construction value added to Eastern Charlotte year to date. There's been six subdivision, subdivision plans approved and one new in the last month. You've had three zoning confirmation letters issued and 18 new homes approved year to date with three new in the last month. In terms of enforcement, there's been some active enforcement going on. Eight new files opened in the last month and 17 new files year to date. And now I, as the CEO referenced, there is the meeting coming up where council is going to be looking at further enforcement actions. So we have several, or a number of files that are open since 2024 that have been flagged on land titles for enforcement action. But further steps council can take with bringing those properties into compliance when there's unwillingness on the part of the landowner to, to comply with the bylaws as they're required to do so. So with that, I will conclude my report. If there's any questions, happy to take them.
Great. I appreciate that very much, Alex. Councillor Lee, you're first. Council, Council Lee, you're first.
Well, it depends on the delineation reports accepted by the Department of Environment and Local Government, and then what we want to see is what needs to be shown on the final plan of subdivision, so any regulated features, if they're previously unmapped, they essentially will be mapped on the subdivision plan, so that if a future lot buyer goes in there and they buy a lot, they know that there's going to be a regulated feature on their property, so there's a buyer beware element to it. I understand you don't know how long the government's going to be back to you on that, but in your previous experience, how long have you looked at? We're pretty long.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
He's losing valuable time, and I know he can only do stuff.
Oh, for sure, no, I understand. I cannot really say this specific scenario is something which I can say is about this long, unfortunately, I just, I don't know. But I would hope for him as well that it is speedy, and, yeah, so the, as I said, the road and the park land dedication can happen at council, but the actual creation of the lot is something the development officer has to do, they can only do it once all the issues that would relate to that lot's future use are either shown in the plan, kind of like restricted covenants, if there's anything like that, it's got to be shown on the plan. And I've seen the delineation, like preliminary look, and I don't think this can be anything very significant, so it's, I don't think there's going to be any major issues with this one, so...
Probably two to three lots would be affected by it.
I would suspect, yeah.
Hopefully there's nothing you can do to it.
There is nothing I can do, unfortunately, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Council Thompson, you're next.
This goes with us possibly changing to a town from a rural district. What happens to all the rural plans that are in place now if we would change to a town municipality?
It's a great question, so if you, well, actually, right now, the legal name, you're Eastern Charlotte, you're a municipality, but you're legally a rural community, right? So you could, council could say to us, you know, Alex, start a rural plan process, start the community engagement, go do the background research, we would start today, but you'd be getting a rural plan, and it's just going to talk about your land use and zoning, nothing about your infrastructure, roads, water, parklands, all those other things that go in a detailed municipal plan. Like right now, the town of St. George municipal plan is, has a lot of detail in it, it could have more detail, but it covers a lot of things. And so going to rural planning way would be almost downgrading the level of planning you get, but you could start that today. But what it would do is it would, if you did it as Eastern Charlotte, it would repeal all the plans that are in existence, because those plans were adopted by the Minister of Local Government. And so council, when it goes to make a new plan, it has to essentially wipe out all the slate clean. So the Fundy Bay Area Rural Plan, the one we worked on with you and that committee, that would be repealed, and even the situation that we're doing a rural plan for Eastern Charlotte. It's the same thing, though, if we do a municipal plan. Now, all said and done, we worked with all of those plans, so we know what, like, we have an institutional memory of what those community meetings were about, so we can bring some of that knowledge forward, but we will redo the public consultations again so that experience you had in Fundy Bay would be replicated for a new municipal plan for Eastern Charlotte, so that would be the goal.
Could we split it into the wards, like individual wards would have individual plans?
No, no, it has to be one plan for the whole entity, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much, Alex.
You're welcome.
Oh, no, I didn't see anybody's hands come up. Did I miss somebody? No, thank you very much for coming in. Okay, Council, next we have is the fire report, and I'll go to Councilor Thompson on this.
The fire report for April 2025 for Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue, a total of eighty calls, twenty-six fire calls, two rescue calls, five motor vehicle accidents, twenty-two medical calls, fifteen meeting, training, and maintenance calls, and all our firefighters are trained in medical first, or medical first responder, thank you.
Any questions or comments? I'll make one comment, I just like to take the opportunity to apologize for incorrectly identifying our prior chief last week in a TV interview who's having paramedic training, whereas his proper designation is called EMR, Emergency Medical Responder, that is his correct, the correct title for it. And as well, I make, as most people in the public, I grew up in the seventies, so I always, anybody who grew up in the seventies, you always called ambulance people, ambulance drivers, apparently that's, I found out this week, that's incorrect, and they're actually to be referred to as paramedics, so I apologize for the wrong references this past week. If not, we'll move ahead to, oh, Council Deadarak is your next.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Do we have a recruitment strategy yet for new volunteers for the fire department?
There's no, like, there's no documented, like, procedural strategy, no.
I think we also talked about what they did in a nearby municipality of doing an open house, is there any plans to do something similar here?
Yeah, we have done an open house in the past, I think there was one uptake, so it's, you know, more or less, social media, trying to get their word out that way, being out in the public, that's sort of what they're trying to do.
So would you say, like, in the last year, for example, we've had one new recruit?
At least, yeah.
Just one, okay. All right, that's my question, thank you.
Yeah, I'll add to that, we're very fortunate in Charlotte County to have a mutual aid agreement, whereas all the departments, all across Charlotte County, all work together, so when a major call comes in, some trucks are already on the road enrolling when there's a major, when they know it's a major, major fire, so, for example, St. Andrews and St. Stephen are probably already on the way, especially St. Andrews and this area, especially those two are working very closely all the time. There's times you may not see St. Andrews because they may be sitting at the fire hall with the full crew while Eastern Charlotte is actually fighting the fire, St. Andrews will come over as a backup, and it works the other way around, Eastern Charlotte will go over towards St. Andrews when they get a major fire over that way too, so it's great that we have that mutual aid agreement, that everybody works together, and makes a big difference today in today's world, where volunteers are hard to get. Public Works, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, you're not waving very high.
Yeah, not very high. To what Councilor Deadarak has said, why don't, why don't we look at putting out on the Eastern Charlotte Fire Recreation Page of doing an open house here some evening and sell it both ways, right, like from social media and in-person kind of deal, and, you know, just give that little bit of a buzz to see, I mean, there's lots of good people in our area that might be trying to figure out how they can do something in their time, and if we could look at doing that, I'm sure that would be. And my other thing is, is my heart goes out to the Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue Group. We all know we had a bad fire in our area here, there was a loss of life in that, and once again, I just want to make sure, Your Worship, through the CAO, that our firefighters have everything that they need through EAP and anything that they need for that stuff.
For sure. It might be great to have other fire departments involved with that recruitment too, because we're so close in Charlotte County too, you may have people living on the borders too, in Diggity Wash area, we're so big now, and of course, the other areas are bigger now too, so there may be people living on the borders, it'd be good to have the other departments here as well too, to try to get somebody to recruit. Or you could end up being, and there's the case too, and I'm probably speaking out of turn here, but sometimes a person may work over here in Eastern Charlotte all day long, it'd be nice to have that person take a call here, and then when they go back home at nighttime, they could be on the St. Andrews fire department, so that's a good way of doing it too, because people do work in different areas as well too, as long as you have the training, that's all that matters. I'll move on to the public work support, I'll call on Councilor McCrory.
Guess I'll talk on this one. The water flushing has been done, and there's more to follow, this is Black's Harbor site, sorry. Cleaning of the water tower, as Jason said, is coming up. Repairs of the dugout at the ball field due to wind damage has been completed. MB Power has requested locations for new poles to be installed at several locations due to upgrades and repairs needed. Repairs to a culvert in Green Valley, Green Law Valley have been completed. The garbage truck is getting to the point where it needs to be replaced soon versus the cost of major repairs needed. We are going to continue this service. We will continue to do general checks on all equipment along with log sheets, but the fleet is showing its age, cosmetic and mechanical issues, these will need to be upgraded soon. That's from Ricky Lovett, Foreman, St. George. All the sweeping has been done, floats are back in the Riverside Park, picnic tables were picked up from Monday high and brought in and stained, I think they're all out now, aren't they, Jason?
Yes.
Yeah. They've begun to fix up snowflow damage to lawns around town, flower pots were brought into the shop for cleaning and paint, lawn mowers were serviced and made ready for season, they've already been out and doing their thing, and we built a pad out of limestone for the food truck to park on at Riverside Park. And that's it for St. George.
Thank you, Council McCrory, questions or comments? Council Deadarak is your first.
Your worship, I have a question for our CAO. First question for the water section, it says that the water levels in well four and five have not increased where they should be for this time of year. Well four is one of our workhouse horse wells, and low levels concerning, considering now is when it should be at its highest. It also mentioned, in his notes, he also mentions that a solution may have to be sought if we have another dry summer, so what would those solutions be?
It would be channeling, a channel, that's the meadow that comes to the south part of Lake Utopia, so there's a sandbar that feeds into a bit of a marsh area, so that's, over the years, has just gotten full of silt, and really would have to be channeled out to allow water to come from Lake Utopia into that marsh and then fill in the aquifer of those wells, so it's something we've discussed with, well, the main marsh and landowner, which is J.D. Irving, so they've done similar things with Ducks Unlimited, making out these sort of channels so we can bring water in, but you then start to get into issues where you open these channels up to hopefully fill in your wells, which eventually, once the water gets high in lake, in the lake, starts to come into that area as well, so really, Lake Utopia is almost like a large bowl, and that area of the marsh is a bit of a crack or a chip in the bowl where water can spill over into this area, so we open it up more, we're going to allow more water to come through, and so it's something that we've looked at over the years, but that would probably be the main alternative, and that would really feed a number four. Well number five is, you know, it was put in to replace well number one, which was on Riverview Avenue by Stan Smith's old place, but it was, it never has really ever given us a good production, we get very limited production out of it, so, so our main goal would just to try to feed the water to number four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Questions, going to Deputy Mayor?
I've got one for the CAO also, said on the food truck to park a truck, I believe we were going to make that pad accessible for one, two, three, whatever, so.
Yeah, the immediate one was, we know that we have the one that's returned, so we are definitely going to open it up for other food trucks.
Just if there's interest out there, so people don't think we're limiting it.
Yeah, it's a good point, I mean, certainly there's people out there that are entertaining, starting up a food truck, and come in and talk to us at the municipal hall, and it's a great location, you know, as long as it's something that is different than the existing food truck that's there, and maybe something that's going to be a little different, but certainly a great location.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move along to the Parks and Recreation Report, and then Councilor Hat.
Your worship, so the CAO has kind of really touched on everything there, other than the shutdown and ice removal, obviously it's all complete, painting and general maintenance is going on throughout the building, they're still acquiring quotes for the upgrades that the inspector was in around the mechanical room, so just bringing it up to code, and spring lacrosse sessions have started down there, I see, and they excited that the Fog City rollers have booked again for their annual sleigh, the Fundy roller door will be down there, and I shared on Facebook today, and I see that the municipality shared that as well, so that'll be coming along in the information with that. The rest of it, Your Worship, was already covered by our CAO.
Questions or comments? If not, we'll move ahead to committee reports, any committee reports tonight? Council Hat?
Yeah, Your Worship, if you don't mind, I'll just continue into that, so if you recall last month's report, there was upgrades being done to the basketball court and the baseball field here at J.O. Spiny Drive in the coming weeks, those upgrades are still on target, but I'll be honest, I need the weather to cooperate a little bit. There is a fence and benching going around the basketball court here, council, we met and decided on that direction, and to bring some, well, caged-in area, but also to give some seating for people that are watching for it, so not everybody has to be standing there, so there is one in St. Stephen that kind of looks like the same setup that we're going with, so it's kind of be a cookie cutter to that one, so. The fence and benches will be going along, I believe the fence is this week, tomorrow, so you'll see some equipment around in this area over the next week or so, so just be patient. The drainage at the baseball field, I see the excavators here today, so that'll be starting as well tomorrow and Friday, okay. Bicycle rodeo that was scheduled for May 8th has been rescheduled, as we mentioned before, it will be Thursday, May 29th at 6:00 PM at Eastern Charlotte Recreation Complex, so I hope everyone can get out and come down to that great event and support the kids, and it's always, always been a great attended thing, so. Our Mother's Day luncheon here that was held on Saturday, May 10th, right here at the center, we had forty people in attendance, I'm sorry, I was unable to attend myself, but looking at the pictures and comments, it was a great time and had by all, and everyone left with full bellies, so that's what it's all about, fellowship. Roughly four months ago, we were approached, so this is kind of some exciting news, so it's been a lot of work, and I'm pretty proud to be able to get to this stage, and I know council is very proud to be able to get to this stage. So roughly four months ago, we were approached to potentially have a junior A hockey team play out of Eastern Charlotte Recreation Complex. So today, I'm very pleased to say it has been approved. We still have a lot of work to do before the 25-26 season begins, and that is correct, 25-26 season, so September this year. If you have been following our Facebook page on Eastern Charlotte and the Parks and Rec page, you will see that we are in need of a team name. That contest, if you have any suggestion, visit our website and our Facebook page and complete the form before tomorrow night at midnight. Doing this will give you a chance to also win two free passes, season passes, to this season's game, so go on the website, you got three things in, you can write your three names in, and then as of Friday, we will populate and take the top three out of that, and then we're going to do some type of draw for everybody that's put names in, and you'll win two free season passes, so that's priority number one, we got to get this team named, because everything's based around on that, of getting it registered, so, and I need the public's help with that. Once the name is chosen, there will be a designated Facebook page and a website page created to make it easier to view all the team information, so it'll be a dedicated page just for our team and the support and all the functions of that. We are also seeking roles, to fill roles of the governing board, so there'll be a board that's going to come together to kind of steer, help steer the team, and to be the community contact and influence in that, so as well as other roles that will need to be filled. Some of the additional roles include equipment manager, lodging coordinator, the biggest one that we're going to need some big help with is billet coordinator throughout the school, and working with the families that would be, the kids that will be coming here, because they will be introduced into this community just like our own families, so that's a big, that's a big role, so finding the right person for that one is key. Promotions, medical roles, which I was worried about at the beginning of this, but we have seen some, the CAO knows too, there's been some definite, a lot of emails coming in to help with medical and training, so that was two major concerns on getting them some information out and getting people intrigued into that, so, and there's a bunch more, so if you are interested in joining in any capacity, and I mean any capacity, it will take a community to make this go and thrive, so please reach out to myself or the municipal office, and we'll be hosting an information session and meeting- And we'll be hosting an information session and meeting the next week or so, once we get everybody's names together. And even if those might be on the fence that are want to come and listen to what was said. So we will have the team owner here for that night. And we'll, it'll be like an informal thing, and we'll go through what some of the roles and duties are. And anybody that's interesting, probably looking at five or six of a governing board, which would take more of a leadership role in this. So this coming Saturday, May twenty-third, is our annual community cleanup. And I know myself, I'll be at Canal Beach. And any other counselors here that I think that that place is definitely coming out of spring, needs a good cleanup. So anybody who's willing to come out and help to get it opening, get it ready for opening day. There will also be a second cleanup. I know that Counselor Thompson is probably going to talk on that in his council's comments later. So and the municipality will be, as always, hanging out drinking water, garbage bags and gloves. So if you want to clean your own area up, that's more than welcome as well. And we can get some material out to you guys. And remember, if there's, anybody finds any drug related stuff, just please get it in a box or identify where it is and reach out to the municipality and and we'll have that removed safely. Don't try to remove it yourself. So upcoming events to take note of, though, our Eastern Charlotte Community Yard Sale will be Saturday, June seventh. You can register on our website or the Facebook page, or you can call the office and the staff will help you out. Also, June seven, Canal Beach and the Splash Pad will open for the season. So June seventh, are we on for that target? Perfect. Saturday, June fourteenth, will be the hosting of the Father's Day Breakfast. So something a little bit different. We had a Mother's Day social. I know myself, as being a dad, I love breakfast. That's my main staple meal. So and I can probably look around here, there's probably a few guys here that like the breakfast too. Friday, that Father's Day Breakfast will be on Saturday, June fourteenth. For more information on how to register, and it'll be on our Facebook page or call the office, and once again, the staff can help you. But I do want to jump ahead a little tiny bit to Summer Fest twenty twenty-five. The dates of Summer Fest twenty twenty-five will be July eighteenth to the Sunday twenty-first. So that's the July eighteenth to the twenty-first. And the theme this year that staff has come up with is on the farm. And I think it's kind of, kind of fitting, really. No matter where you go, there's lots of farming that goes on, whether it's on the water or on land. So I'll let your minds be creative about that. So and your worship, I think that is my report. Correct. Yep, that's, that'll be coming out very shortly on, on the website as too. So once again, if you haven't gone and liked the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec's Facebook page, please do so because that's where everything gets posted and try to keep the community up to date.
Excellent. Now, anybody coming to Eastern Charlotte over the summer, it's going to be lots of events to keep everybody busy and keep everybody happy, it'd be great. Is anything else, anybody questions, comments? If not, we'll move ahead to the financial statement tonight. I need a motion to accept the financial reports. Counselor Lee, do you want to just read that out loud if you don't mind, Counselor Lee? Great, thank you. Any second before that, Counselor Thompson? Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing, naturally. Old Business is next. The Village of Black Harbor bylaw Z point two point six to amend the bylaw Z point two. Black Harbor, I'll either turn this over to, I guess maybe Jason at this point, or Alex? Alex is not moving, so it's going to be Jason.
Thank you, your worship. So this is just the continuation with the rural plan amendment for Black Harbor, as, as Alex Henderson with the Service Commission mentioned. So we'll be looking for a council to look at a scheduled hearing of the public objections for the rural plan. And I think that's just with the objections, I'm looking at Chris there too. Just, it's just a public hearing, we're scheduling, yeah.
Can we, can we be specific on the, just for the audience, where are we talking about?
So this is, this is the Hillside, Hillside Crescent. We have a couple hillsides and a couple hill crescentes and stuff.
Yeah, Black Harbor's Hillside Drive, I believe.
Yeah, Hillside Drive. And so this is across from the post office. There's three lots that would be in and on that road. So be subdividing off those lots and the cul-de-sac area. So something that we can look at, like I think I've mentioned before, but trying to add some new lots for, for production for housing in Black Harbor. So this will be a step towards that and amending and making, getting that, those lots out for production.
And just on a side note, we did personal secretary last month. They put off scheduling of the public hearing until they receive the reviews from the PrAC.
Correct. Yeah, I think we have that letter. Do you have that letter, Alex, or?
Yeah, the, the letter, I think, was just a general that there was no issues and that PrAC was in favor of council proceeding. And yeah, so the next step would be your public hearing and scheduled twenty-one days from now, basically.
Excellent, excellent. Any questions or comments from council on that?
I guess just the, the issue there with it'd have to be no later, no earlier than June the, the eleventh. So a minimum of twenty-one days notice that we'd be looking for.
Counselor Hat?
Yeah, your worship, I just want to say thank you. Last month, I know we, we talked about here of letting PrAC get their time, go through the file, make sure it's done right. And I think that's very, very critical on when we start making changes to subdivisions. And I just want to say thank you very much for allowing that process to happen.
Okay, what's the next part is the schedule of a public hearing. We need a motion of council to, to set that. What's council's pleasure for that? Counselor Ted, I see you moving towards the mic.
I'm just wondering what the twenty-one day, what, what the date actually is. Do you have your calendar?
It'd be no earlier than June eleventh.
And that date falls on a Wednesday.
It'd be a Wednesday.
I move, be it resolved that council schedule a public hearing of the jumps to bylaw Z dash two dash six to amend bylaw Z dash two being a rural plan for the Village of Black Harbor on June, Wednesday, June the eleventh at six P M. Location I would suggest probably be Stella Maris Hall from Black Harbor.
Great. We have a motion on the floor to have that public hearing set for Wednesday, June eleventh at six P M. At Stella Maris, we need a second before that. Counselor Hat? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing, naturally. Thank you very much, Alex, appreciate it. That brings us to Old Business again, New Brunswick Dart Association. What's, what's council's pleasure on this? Nothing, nothing here? Counselor, oh, Counselor Lee?
I move that the letter be sent to the New Brunswick Dart Association explaining that council thanks them for the request. However, council is unable to fulfill their request at this time.
We have a motion on the floor, but Counselor Lee, I need a second before that, Counselor Thompson? Question or comment on that motion? So Counselor Ted, you go first?
Yeah, just like make a comment with, like any of these requests, we, we have, we have it on our website, I believe, in the fall of each year for any donation request. And they are to come in and there's a set time for those to come in. So I would suggest anyone that's looking for a donation request, that they, they, they do that in a timely manner. Because it, you know, if, if you're bringing it after that date, chances are it's, it's probably going to be rejected by council.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing, naturally. That brings us to nine C, the Bay of, Bay of Fundy Dog Rescue. What is council's pleasure on this? The council, okay, I got a, nobody's saying anything? Oh, Counselor, Counselor Hat?
I move that a letter be sent to the Bay of Fundy Rescue explaining that council thanks them for their request. However, council is unable to fulfill their request due to this time and echo Counselor Ted's comments.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, but Counselor Hat, I need a second or four, Deputy Mayor, yeah? Hat and hat, two hats. One more, we have a hat trick. Question? That's the hockey stuff coming up. Any, any other, any other questions or comments on the motion?
I'll comment on that. Once, once again, Counselor, I thought we were talking about the Leafs for a second here, but Counselor Ted's comments, that's, that's very true that if, if you stop and think about it, when we, it's taxpayers' money. So we have a budget, we have a budget that we can run in, and, and that should be done in our budget season. So that's why them, the ones that are come in, it'd be nice if we could get them during the time. So I just want to echo Counselor Ted.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing, naturally. That brings us on to New Business. There's the tender, tender results, twenty-four dash zero seven, the Black Harbor Sewage Lagoon. I'm going to go Jason on this first.
Thank you, your worship. So we did this, after we did a study of the Black Harbor Lagoons, just understand the capacity. It came back that we really had not much capacity left in the lagoons. So we then looked at the alternative of either dredging or adding chemicals, but the chemicals, any chemicals going into that, they're, they're pretty adhesive and they take a lot of time to, to really dissolve any of the, any of the material that's there. So the option was going to dredging. So we do put out a tender, the sort of, I guess, the project lead on this project manager that we had come in with outside help was Glenn Porter, who's many people know. He used to work with C B C L. So Glenn, who has been in retirement, came out and helped us with this and helped put the tender together. So we put the, the bids were opened shortly after two P M. on the sixth of December. And they read it aloud, tender proposals were received for dredging of the Sewage Lagoons in Black Harbor. Both lagoons are limited capacity and dredging will, will free up space in the lagoons. The following proposals were submitted with corresponding bid. G F L. for five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, five hundred and six and eighty-six cents. Clean Harbors for three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents. E coming Contracting Limited Incorporated for one point seven million, five, fifty, one point, one million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand and fifty, and five hundred and fifty-five dollars. No other submissions were received. The project advisor for the project, Glenn Porter, he did accompany this with a letter and just his review. There were some concerns with some of the, one of the tenders and just how they were being quoted out. So based on Mr. Porter's letter and, and what we know with the dredging, my recommendation, G F L. is awarded the contract for the Sewage Lagoons and dredging project.
Okay, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion for this. And Jason is suggesting G F L. at five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and six dollars and eighty-six cents. Is there any, any leeway on the eighty-six cents?
Sure. I guess one thing I just would say is within this, if we're able to put a motion together, that the motion, we should have something that does read that the funding does, will come from the Utility Reserve Capital Fund for Black Harbor Utility. So again, it would be the Black Harbor Utility Reserve, Black Harbor Capital Utility Reserve. And so there is, there is, it's a healthy reserve. But that's where the funding would come for, from this project. As I mentioned, we did go to the province with the assistance of the Service Commission, put a proposal together. And that was bouncing around in there for a while, and they just found they had no matches with the, the current housing funds that are out there. Did a great, great effort to sell this as, as an opportunity for housing, but unfortunately, they, they didn't, didn't want to support the project.
Okay, at this point, counsel, the motion is basically there in front of you. You just have to fill in the, the name of the company, the amount, and then the, where the money will come from, which is the Black Harbor Capital Utility Reserve Fund. So I have to have somebody here, I can't do that, so somebody at the table has to do this. Counselor Hat, would you like to? Nope, nope, no, anybody else like make a motion? No, no, no takers on this? Go on once, twice? Dies over here. We move on to ten B tonight, which is Y M C A and I have to have the Deputy Mayor take over this.
So ten B is negotiations with the Y M C A on their programs offered in Black Harbor and St. George. So I'll get our C A O. to walk us through the contract.
So this is the, the operating agreement between Eastern Charlotte and the Y M C A Southwest New Brunswick. This, we have an ongoing, I guess, agreement with them for operating their, their programming in the Black Harbor Arena or the Eastern Charlotte Recreation Complex. So this would be, I guess, adding on to that. There is, the only difference is, is that this would account for the twenty-twenty-five year through to twenty-twenty-eight, spring of twenty-twenty-eight. And the other difference is, is the funding model for this, the reimbursement of expenditures for the program that would be reimbursed to the Y per year was previously eighty thousand per year. And under this new agreement, the change would be one hundred thousand per year for the Y M C A.
So we need a motion to accept or deal with this. Adam, oh, Counselor Hat, excuse me.
I can make that motion. Be it resolved that council sign the operating agreement in partnership with the Y M C A in Greater St. John, beginning June first, twenty twenty-five, to May thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second or? Mr. Ted? Any questions?
Have a comment, Deputy, if you. So this is also, when this originally started at that eighty thousand, it was only in the one facility in Black Harbor at the Eastern Charlotte Recreation Complex. This is now kind of gone, they operate somewhere to here, they operate somewhere to the elementary schools. So it's only stands to reason as we've got bigger that, and the ask has got bigger, that eventually this gets bigger as well. So and I do know they had lost some funding around eighty thousand dollars that was, was helping with this as a short gap. So I mean, to me, I'm, I'm okay with the extra money now that it's a bigger area myself, so.
Any other questions or comments? So I guess we'll put it to vote. All those in favor? All right. Those opposed? Seeing none, motions carried.
That brings us to ten C, Age Friendly Community Committee. I'll go to Counselor Dedricus on this. This is your, sorry, your baby, I'll go to you.
Council's baby, actually.
If, 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 there's two ways to do this. Probably the proper way to do this would be put a motion on the floor and a second, then they'll, then, then speak on it.
Sure, I'll make the, I'll burst through the motion, then I have a question, actually.
Why don't we go that route?
So the motion is be it resolved that council adopt the Age Friendly Community Committee Terms of Reference Amendment, two thousand twenty-five dash zero one.
Great, thank you, Counselor Dedricus. I need a second before that, Counselor Thompson? Okay, Counselor Dedricus.
Yeah, my question is, what, what is the purpose of the amendment? That's my question. That's what, that's the original question I wanted to ask, so, yeah.
Oh, here comes your expert.
Okay, so with both of these, the terms of reference have an appendix that has to be maintained for who is on the committee.
Correct, yeah.
So because the members of the committee have changed, this one is actually a little bit retroactive.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, because we just did the next item. The St. George Beautification Committee is going to have the same idea. So because the members have changed, there's an appendix that needs to be updated. So this, all this does is update that appendix.
I see, I see, I understand, perfect.
Anything else you want to talk about?
No, that's it.
No, you're, you're happy with that? Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, that's passing, naturally.
Aye.
Contrary, that's passional. Ten D, same thing, St. George Beautification Committee. Counselor Dedarakis would like to make-
Sure, absolutely. So it will be resolved that council adopt the St. George Beautification Committee Terms of Reference Amendment, two thousand twenty-five dash zero one.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Dedarakis. We need a second before that. Deputy Mayor, question or comment on the, on the motion? Counselor Hat.
Worship, maybe to Counselor Dedarakis for my question, maybe if I can address her, if you're okay with that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, go.
With the Beautification Committee, is anybody of the municipality with that committee, like yourself or Jason or?
I am.
Okay.
I am. And actually, in the terms of reference, it says that we're supposed to have like an ongoing dialogue with the municipality.
Yes.
So for example, there was a grant that was recently applied for. That was done through, I believe, Jason and Kara Hat, I believe. So yeah, we're working in tandem with, with the municipality.
Okay, I guess my question or more of a comment would be if the committee came out with recommendations, how is that getting back to the municipality that we can give actions and execute whatever needs to be done?
So for example, we only met once. I forwarded the minutes to council, then they gave some recommendations of what to do. The, that's how I would assume we would proceed. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
During your committee updates.
Oh, during the committee updates?
You can read that.
Okay. Should I submit those in advance?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Any other questions or comments on, on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passional. Proposed bylaw EC dash fourteen, utility rates bylaw. I'm going to go to Jason on this.
Thank you, Worship. So something that we've been working on for, for a bit here. This will be looking at the utility rates for both Black's Harbor and St. George Water Systems. We're going to be looking at, you know, I guess, number one, Black's Harbor has a different set of schedules and as well, St. George, they, they don't really have a schedule for billing that is the same. And as well, in Black's Harbor, there are discounts for paying bills early and interest for paying bills late. So we're trying to bring, with this bylaw, we'll be bringing both of those water systems and how, how we are charging for those and the fees under sort of one guideline and allowing for discounts to happen for St. George and bring them both in, into that. So we're still, we're kind of working through this, this, I mean, having the discounts, it is a budgeted item, so it'd be something new as we kind of work through to try to evaluate how much that cost, that cost of a discount would be for the St. George Water. So this is a first draft. Share this with council tonight. We hope to, within the June time period, probably get, get killed with some finance team there tomorrow, but we're hope to have this into maybe a first reading with the month of June and, and so that way there we can move this forward and to have, hopefully get this enacted. We probably will be enacting this within the January, the first of 2026. That way there we have a total, a number for the discount for St. George and budgeted as well. But that's the, for the purpose of this bylaw would be to bring both of those water systems and how we're charging and scheduling billing under, under the same rules.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on that? If not, we'll move on to ten E, which is the-
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, because I know originally we talked about keeping them two separate ones because there are some major differences on fee structures and whatnot. So how's that going to be that they're still their identities, but just a guideline of, of, you know, paying your bill on time, you get a discount. Late, there'd be interest charges. How, how's that going to be dealt with, I guess, is?
Yeah, it's, it's, it is, that's the, the, the main principle on it is the scheduling and, and the discounts for early, early payments, I guess, on time payment. So that was the main back of this, of this bylaw. So they are two separate systems. It'd be appendix that would give us two different rates, of course. It's nothing about saying, hey, the rates are going to be the same for the two municipalities. They are two separate systems, two different utility budgets for both of them. So it would just be more about how we're billing for those. And so bringing them both under the same rules of billing and how we have you do those billing schedules.
Yeah, so that would be, I would expect that we'd have to have this figured out, though, for budgeting purposes this fall, though.
Correct.
So like, you know.
Yeah.
That's, that's got to be figured out fairly quickly.
Right.
That's September, October, so.
Yeah. Yeah. The purpose would be to get this passed and that way there, we, we will know that it's, it's enacted and get, and get a rate for the 2020, here's this 2026 budget. Yeah.
Good. We'll move on to ten F. I know it's wrong on your sheet. There's a ten E, but it's actually ten F, I get it. Yep, yep. It's the proposed bylaw EC dash zero six A, ATVs and municipal roads. The Deputy Mayor or Jason would like to speak on this? Either one, doesn't matter?
I guess just with-
Yeah, Jason, yeah, yeah.
The, so this is another drafted bylaw. Supposed to be an amendment to an existing bylaw that we currently have, EC oh six. So council's asked to, to look at this bylaw and to sort of widen out the network of, of roads allowing ATVs within the community of St. George. Currently, right now, it's mostly Main Street and getting over towards Brunswick Street. So there'd be never of other municipal roads within St. George that we'd bring on, onto that network and allow for a larger ATV network within St. George.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Any comments on, Deputy Mayor, you're going for the button there. I see right there on the, Michael told you, you're, you're fast. So you go ahead. You have the floor.
Even though this is a municipal bylaw, we will still have to go to public safety for final approval, which is a formality at best, I guess, but we still have to do that. Council's main decision to go in this route was when the bridge was closed last winter. The ATVs were using different routes. We had zero complaints other than the normal, you know, the one or two non-compliant individuals. It says, I would guess, we always should put it, but that's been ongoing no matter what we do. So I guess it's a decision we came to and we're hoping to be able to move it forward.
Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
I guess just, and as well, I would ask council with both of these bylaws, you know, as we go through and, and work through these ones, make sure that we know we're hitting every, all the points. But with this ATV bylaw, there are some streets that, of course, are provincial roads that we cannot, we can't overstep our authority on. I guess namely, one is, is Little de Teet Road being a provincial road. So there are going to be certainly some streets within the community of St. George that won't, won't, won't come under this, this bylaw. So that would be more of a provincial jurisdiction that they would have. But I guess I would just encourage everyone to take a look at it and, and see, you know, there's how, you know, especially for navigating through St. George, for the most part, it's pretty simple sticking to the municipal roads and, and, but there are certainly some roads that are provincial that we wouldn't be able to, we can't, we can't provide any allowances for the ATVs.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this? Counselor Dedarakis, do you want to speak on this, since it's mostly in St. George? It's, it's an issue just for St. George?
I think what's most important is just hearing from the public and, and, and hearing what they, what they think about it. Right? That's it.
Yep, great. Counselor Ted, you're next.
I would just add, if you look at other municipalities that have did this, the majority of them have opened it up to all of the roads. So we're not going to be any different than that. But I do think it's important to get some, some feedback for sure.
Yep. So the, these last two items tonight were just for information for the public tonight on what council is actually working on. Ten G is the St. George Public Library is on the docket tonight. What's council's pleasure on this one? Counselor Lee, you're first.
Be it resolved that council find a new location for the St. George Public Library that is age-friendly and accessible to the general public.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, but Counselor Lee, I need a second for that. Deputy Mayor, question or comment on the motion? Counselor Dedarakis, you're, Dedarakis, you're first.
Yes. So at the, at our age-friendly committee meetings, this is actually a topic that's been brought up several times. I think at least once every meeting, the issue is having a library that is bottom line accessible. And where it is currently, which is in the municipal hall, there's stairs. There isn't an elevator that, that, that folks have access to. So from that perspective, it, it needs to be moved to another location that's, that's more accessible. And another point is the hours of operation. So the current hours of operations are between 1:00 and 4:00 PM, I believe. So, you know, just thinking of a new model, I guess, in the, in the future to make it more, more accessible to everyone. That's it.
Yeah, I guess with the council's wishes to, to do the study on this library, you know, certainly we'll be working hand in hand with the library group that's there today. But, you know, I guess we put a call out to, to residents that have any particular feedback, that would have suggestions on maybe different sites that are available out there within Eastern Charlotte to help, to help move this, this work along. And certainly, you know, we've, we've had a great relationship over the years, but I know previous councils with the town of St. George have all looked at this matter and saying, you know, it's something that just needs to be resolved. So I'm certainly applaud this council for, again, taking this, this measure on to sort of look at an option for a permanent location for a new library. And so we'll certainly be working with them. But I, I just encourage any residents that are out there that may have an idea for this. You know, maybe there's some residents out there that have, they're sitting on endowments or anything like that. Certainly they can maybe help solve this problem. But we'll certainly be working with any, any interested parties to, to, as we navigate through this.
Thank you, Jason. Counselor Ted, you're next.
I'm just wondering if it, in this day and age with, with all the cutbacks, is there any grants or anything out there for to, to, that we could explore and may help us expand what we currently have?
I think there's something the Service Commission have, because they actually have a grant writer or something, so that maybe we could, we could throw it, throw it over to them to, to start looking for that with the grant writer.
Your worship, if I may. There's also a funding through a COA. So that's an option as well that we could look into.
Good. Any other, Counselor Lee?
So are we restricted as to what we can apply for because library is in the municipal offices?
No, we're sure.
No? So we can still apply for any of the grants? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. Did we, we pass that motion, do we? No, we, no, we didn't, no. So we need a vote on that. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary, that's passional. Correspondents, you're around the loop group donation request. Disregard the motion that you have in front of you. You have a motion that's a little bit wrong there in front of you. Maybe Counselor Thompson, maybe since it's a short letter, could you just read that one out for us?
Incorporated, to request funding for community beautification. We are requesting our budgeted amount for the purchase of flags, thirty-five new flags to be replaced the existing flags on one, on Route 172, the Back Bay Loop Road. The remainder will be erected from various locations throughout Ward Two, Greenspoint, Latit Ferry Landing, Lime Kiln Road, Thorpe Road, Route 172, Main Street, Terson Court, Main Street Meadow Road, the walking trail and the tunnel. The project will be completed by June 30th, 2025. Thank you.
Okay, that's the letter that we received. So at this point, I'll leave it up to council. What's council's wishes for this?
Right.
Counselor Ted, I saw your, I'm thinking then Counselor Lee, I guess.
I move that the letter from around the loop group for the donation request amount be referred to the Finance Committee for review and recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for this to be referred to the Finance Committee. Is there a second for that? Counselor Lee, you're seconding that. Question or comment on the motion? Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Was this not already pre-budgeted or no? I thought we had, I thought we had pre-budgeted money for around the group.
We had, we, there is, there is, that's correct. We've done, we've done annual budgeting for the Christmas, Christmas funds and there was some funding that we gave for another fifteen hundred dollars. So there are, there are budget lines within Eastern Charlotte's budget that's not specific to the, the Around the Loop Group, but there are about twenty-five hundred dollars that's, that is designated for them for 2025 year.
So would that be applied to this five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two or no, this is separate?
Yeah, so the five thousand, it would be applied, a portion of that would be applied. So it's another, I think, the twenty-five hundred dollars that's within some of the budget lines that would be, I guess, the decision of council.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just to be clear, there's no motion for, for any money being put out tonight? It's just go, to go to the committee. Counselor Lee, you've got it.
I was just questioning as to whether they would not fall under the same categories as any of the other people asking for donations? Shouldn't they have had this in last fall?
It wasn't.
It was in last fall? Okay, great, thanks.
Counselor, Counselor Ted.
This specific request for flags was in, in their budget?
Request for the fun-
Right, but, but a portion thereof, not the whole thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments on the motion to send this to the Finance Committee? If not, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passional. Eleven B, New Brunswick Country Music Hall of Fame donation request. Council's pleasure. I'll go to Jason first.
I'll just, just review this.
You can't make a motion, by the way.
No, that's certainly not. So it's just a, this is more of a bit of a form letter that's, that's come from Gary and Karen Sturgeon, just with support of the New Brunswick Country Music Hall of Fame that's in Fredericton. So this would be, again, a new, a new request that's come.
Okay, Counselor Lee, you go ahead.
I move that a letter be sent to the New Brunswick Country Music Hall of Fame explaining that council thanks him for the request. However, council is unable to fulfill this at this time because they didn't get their asking in time.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, Counselor Lee. Any, Deputy Mayor's going to second that? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passional. Okay, that brings us to the Community Living Center proclamation request tonight. I'll, I'll do that proclamation. The municipality of Eastern Charlotte, a proclamation. Whereas the municipality of Eastern Charlotte is committed to assisting citizens with, with disabilities to participate fully in our community. And whereas many persons living with disabilities face barriers in the areas of employment, access to information, transportation, housing, education, recreation, and other disability-related supports. And whereas the council believes more citizens with disabilities should have the chance to access disability-related supports to improve their opportunities in New Brunswick. And whereas we support the theme. The theme is championing accessibility and celebrating diversity. Therefore, be it resolved that I, John D. Craig, Mayor of Eastern Charlotte, New Brunswick, do hereby proclaim the twenty-fifth day through the thirty-first day of May, 2025, as Disability Awareness Week. And hereby request the citizens of Eastern Charlotte to join with council in recognizing persons with disabilities and their role in our community in Eastern Charlotte, New Brunswick. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of Eastern Charlotte to be affixed this twenty-first day of May, 2025. Now I'll sign that right here now. And that is completed for tonight. I'll pass that on to the- Ah, that brings us next, folks, to the public presentation appearances. Please note, the members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. No, he's shaking his head down there, okay.
My name's Karen Kernigan. I live at 108 Latit Road, St. George. I just want to talk a little bit about our ALS Walk in St. George that's coming up on June the fourth. And it's at, starts at the St. George Credit Union and it's going to the Eastern Charlotte Municipality Building. And it's, it's, it starts at 5:00. And I really like to encourage everybody to participate. It's our second walk. Last year, we had about a hundred people attend. So it was, it was, for the first walk, it was really good. And I just want to tell you a little bit about, we have a gift basket and the value is a thousand dollars. And people that have donated things for the gift basket is Connors Brothers, Eastern Charlotte Municipality, Cook's True North Salmon. There's wool quilt, wool quilt made by Wizard of Felt. Uncle Maids has to give a hundred dollar gift card. Country Markets twenty-five dollar gift card. The Credit Union staff has done a tree tea oil. St. George Subway has ten vouchers for six inch subs. Boyd's Home Hardware is a twenty dollar gift card. And Wolfhead Smokers is a gift card. The tickets are five dollars a piece. Smokers is a gift card. The tickets are $5 a piece, or three for $10. And all the money goes to the New Brunswick and Nova Scotia ALS Society for, for equipment. As I've said, every household costs about $80,000 to equip an ALS patient. And all that equipment is provided by this ALS Association. And I really thank the council, the municipality, for allowing us to have this app. And it, it's not, it shows, especially Sydney, it shows Sydney that the people in the community care. And it's not an easy disease. And so it's, there's people that have passed, that family could get out and still show that, you know, I remember you. I haven't forgot. And so that's very important to, to let people feel cared for. And one other thing I just wanted to mention, I don't know if it's happened or not, but when you're talking about picnic tables, I was just wondering if you bought any disability picnic tables, like an extension, so that people can haul off with their wheelchairs and have a little bite to eat, you know, because you can't get, you can't get under picnic tables. So that. And another thing is, someday of your, we never thought of these things until you get in our situation. But Sid's not able to get out of the car on our sidewalks in St. George because of the lift, right? So some places, it would, it would even be nice if there was a, when you have a disability place for people to get out, that the curb is cut down so that you can bring your wheelchair right up to the door and they can get out. So those are just things that, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. And I'm going to tell you something. The interview you and Sid had on CHCO is probably the interview of the year, I think, because it was just beautiful. Anybody had a dry eye after that, they're not humans. I tell you, you did, you did a great job with that. And of course, Vicki as well. Anybody else that, this opportunity? Okay, I'm going to go statements from members of council. I have nothing tonight. I'm going to go to the Deputy Mayor to my left.
Just as a note, on behalf of council and the residents of Eastern Charlotte, I would like to pass along sincere condolences to the family, friends of St. Stephen counselor, veteran and cab member, Earl Eastman.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council Thompson?
If anybody in Ward 2 would like to have some bags or water for the cleanup on the 24th, just reach out and we'll look after you. Thank you.
Sorry, Council, ahead.
All right. So tomorrow night here, the Charlotte County Christian Academy is having a dessert auction. They're pretty lucky that I'm on keto right now and can't have sugar. But that's, might have to take a little hiatus for that. So that'll be at 6:00 here. I do want to take a second, Your Worship, and kind of bring some light to what we're kind of thinking about. As you know, Your Worship, we talked about here the last council meeting about doing something for the residents of Black Harbor that are on the water service that we all know is plagued with constant problems. So we've took that back as council here. And I know myself, I, I brought an idea up here. And I think council, we're all kind of trying to figure out how we would do something. So, I mean, it's one thing to give a one-time credit of money. Wouldn't be a lot of money because there's not a lot of money in the reserve fund. So how do we take that and be more proactive with it? Because as this goes on over the next, you know, hopefully within two years, we'll have our own water source up and running, there, there's going to be water main breaks. And there's going to be times that, that are, that are, help are going to be needed. So one of the things that is, council's discussing now that we brought forward was, you know, a flushing schedule. That's, you know what? It's been run by other organizations, but that flushing schedule, it's got to be run by this municipality. And it doesn't matter what's going on. It's, it's going to be a schedule. And that schedule is probably going to have to be multiple times. And then some key locations will have to be more. There is some dead-end trunk lines that have major buildup when, when there's a, an up, a stirrup happening. And one of the other things was, is, that I brought forward was, I had my hot water tank flushed. And I did it myself. It wasn't that big of a job. But I had about, I'm going to say eight to 10 inches of solid, just silt in the bottom of my hot water tank. I was having problems of water discaloration every time our hot water was on. And it really didn't make sense. So one of the things of it, there's about 10 inches of silt in the bottom of it. So I flushed my hot water tank. And since that's happened, I see a significant amount of decaleration during hot and cold events has gone down. So one of the things we brought forward is said, how can we do that in the municipality? Because, you know, Jason would have the number of actual houses that are in the municipality. But the residents that are there, I don't know how many people are actually ever flushed their hot water tank. And we all know, we went through a year of hell where it was nothing but muddy water. And that's all settled everywhere. So how do we look at building a schedule? What's that cost? And how can the municipality put a schedule out and say, hey, listen, we're going to come in and flush the hot water tanks of the residents? And so we're working through that. That's one of the ideas that's on the table right now. And I, I want to say thank you to every one of the counselors that are here at this table, and the mayor, and the CAO. Because it's, it's ideas like this coming forward of how we can be proactive, how we can support each other, how we can help residents on something that not everybody has the skill set to do that, but it will make their water quality better. Because at the end of the day, someday when we do get a brand-new water system, it's still going to have to be done then. So I, I think it's something that we're probably going to figure out how we can execute and make sure that if we say we're going to do it, we get a schedule up and people can sign up. Because I, I think it will pay dividends instead of just of a $100 credit on a water bill, something. Because let's be honest, that's nice now, but that doesn't fix tomorrow's problem. So, so anyway, I just want to say thank you to council. I appreciate it. This is a good crew here. I tell you, anybody says any different, this is a good crew. I've worked with several councils over the year, and there hasn't been one thing that we ever put on the table that we can't discuss or try to figure out something. So this is a good crew. And I want to say thank you to be able to work with such a good crew. There's one other thing. I talked about the hockey team coming in Black Harbor. I'm going to throw out something. So everybody knows I'm very passionate over that arena. It was a reason why I got involved on council originally. Former years of people, we're going to close that facility. And when I stepped forward and said, I think we can do this differently. And we did. We were successful. There's, you know, there's too many names to list here tonight that have been successful in turning that corner and picking the anchor up and turn the lights back on. And let's move to the right direction. And once again, this council has supported that ongoing support. And we're seeing dividends now. It's driving in our community. I do want to see it like the Beehive. I know there's been some Facebook chat about where that name come from. Yeah, I'll, I'll take that on the shins. It's probably never been called the Beehive. But as I said to Paige Scott before, if a, if the municipality owns an arena and we're going to close it, and it's still $100,000 a year deficit of insurance, hydro, and et cetera, my goodness, it, it should be open. It should be open for the community. So that was the mindset that the Village of Black Harbor Council, and then coming into this council that we have done. And it's starting to pay dividends. And we have huge ice rentals. We're actually going to be this year, the CAO and myself had a conversation here a little while ago, that we're going to have to look at scheduling, going back to how we used to do it, on having people there, you know, maybe a week on, week off again. Because scheduling's getting, getting compacted on it. So I do want to say thank you to everybody. We are in the final stages of that infrastructure grant that we had. The basketball, ball hockey court was tore up last fall. The contract, we're supposed to have it done before the winter. That is going to be done within, well, whenever the weather cooperates. But within the next couple of weeks, that'll be going back in. So, but there's one thing out of it. And a gentleman hauled me aside one day in conversation and said, young fella, I, I like where you're going with this, but I want a good quality hockey back in that facility on a Friday or Saturday night. And his name's John Reserad. And anybody who knows, John spent many years at that arena, looking after it and being the stewardship of that arena for years. And John, I will get down to see you, but I, but we have a team coming. We have good quality hockey, caliber hockey coming back into that facility. And I did say that I would hang up my council shoes when we got that running and across the line. But I feel like there's more now that we're Eastern Charlotte and a lot more recreation places that we can do the same thing, too. So let me think about that for a little bit. The other thing is, in June 6th to 9th in this area, you're going to see roughly 130 motorcycles into this area. I have sent out a notice to the mayor of St. Andrews, Fundy Shores, and Eastern Charlotte. It's not a, it's not a motorcycle gang. It's not. It's a bunch of gentlemen that are raising funds for kids that go to Camp Good Time, which is a cancer camp. They get to go one week and forget everything of life and just go have fun. And that's our fundraising thing. So there will be a significant amount of motorcycles in this area and around the restaurants and a fundraiser drive that's going on. So don't be panicked. Don't have to call the RCMP right away or anything. The 6th to the 9th, they will all be in this area. So, Your Worship, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Dederakas?
I can follow up with that. First of all, Karen, thank you for letting us know about the, the walk. You touched on a point about accessibility. And yeah, it's important because it enables and ensures that everyone can participate in our society regardless of their abilities. You know, everyone should be able to go for a promenade on Main Street, or go to the beach, or go to play tennis if they want to, right? So those are things that we, we as a council have to think about constantly, right? When we, when we plan for, for infrastructure, when we plan events, we have to think about everyone, which I, we will. For the beautification, I apologize for not submitting a report, but I can give you an update. So a while ago, a grant was applied for about $1,200 for the coastal linked trail. The committee wanted to, one of the options for the grant was to get some, some bird boxes and bat houses for the trail. So the committee wanted to continue in that direction. So we're going to get some custom designs and some standard bird boxes, bat houses, and duck houses. I checked with council last Tuesday, so everything seems to be okay, I think, with this project. We will be approaching someone in the community to build these. His name is Brian Hat. You may have seen his work before. So that's that. And the last thing I want to say is about libraries, because I didn't really give a justification of why I support libraries. So I just want to share that now. Libraries are important, especially nowadays where accessibility to the internet isn't a given. For a young student doing research or retired person looking at their family tree, sometimes you need a computer and not a phone. Libraries help facilitate that need. Libraries go beyond books, and I think that's where the confusion lies. Libraries are built to be places to gather, to hopefully learn, or just have a quiet space. I think we should be, we should hope to have more welcoming spaces in our community and not less. I'm not satisfied with constantly telling residents to leave the community for everything they want to do. St. Stephen Library just had a seed-saving event, which they taught about the importance of keeping seeds and how to swap afterwards. I think that's cool. I think that's useful. I think that if we offer more within our community, that more people will use these facilities. When we offer less, we can't be shocked when they sit unused. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dederakas. I'm going to go to Council McCrory, Council Lee, Council Ted.
I would just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I'd also like to thank Public Works for getting the picnic tables down to Beaver and the garbage can. And thank the residents that pointed out that it didn't have a cover. And we've got a cover on order. Yes, we had to order the cover. But we do have one coming. And the, I see that the picnic table at the lighthouse has been moved. The group down there moved it up to the pad. So that's great to see down there. They've got a few pictures posted on, online. So thank you.
Excellent. Council McKay, you're good? Okay. Is that a motion? Okay. I just want to, again, thank everybody for coming out tonight and watching. And Bambi Scott-Levitt, I know you're watching tonight. So you and Ella, say hello to you guys tonight. And I need a motion for adjournment. Council Dederakas, again, thank you. Thank you very much.